Yeah, summer, get ready for fall.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I mean, day seven.
She called the regional manager. It's like that train going. She emailed the regional manager, train.
I'm calling the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the time for us to invite any citizen that's here on a matter that's not already on our agenda to schedule a time to speak. Is there anyone who is not already here on an agenda item that wishes to be put onto the agenda? The record should show there are none. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda unless somebody has additions or subtractions from the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda's approved. Would we have a motion on the consent agenda? Go ahead, Stacy.
I have a couple of, maybe it changes if they're acceptable to the board. First, under cellular allowances, I passed out an additional cellular allowance this morning for Michael Taylor in the state's attorney's office. And then I did notice Commissioner Pierce, you and I had visited about that travel request. Bob has one submitted for the same trip. We could add your name to it, if that's acceptable, to going to Alexandria that was like this past weekend. So just add her name to that travel request.
Is that satisfactory with everybody?
Those are the two things I had in the consent agenda.
We'll add those two things to the consent agenda. Are there any other changes for the consent agenda? Anybody want anything removed? Okay.
And the consent agenda consists of?
And on our consent agenda today, we have approval of minutes, approval of travel and education requests, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular allowances, and approval of the human services report.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to regular business. Approval of claims.
Move approval.
Second.
I do have one question, though.
Go ahead.
And this may be just what happens in our timing. Vicki, on the very first page under commission, we have late fees for Wells Fargo. Is that due to our meetings?
It's just when we get the bill and with the meetings, we end up having late fees. And yeah, that's just the way it is. We hate to have to have them, but the only way would be is if we paid it not being approved, you know, until you come and then we'd approve it after we've paid it.
I sure wish we could figure out something else. I mean, that was almost fifty-eight dollars.
It is. It gets to be a lot.
Yeah.
I agree with you. I, we could sure check into it and see what else we can do, but it is their policy and they aren't going to change for us. So we're gonna have to do changing if we wanna get rid of those.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Stacy.
And then also this morning, out on your desks, I passed out another claim that wasn't included in the packet. And this was for the remaining amount for the property purchase for the lots to the south.
Where is that, Stacy? I'm sorry.
That was passed out this morning on your desk.
Is this one?
Okay. And what happened with the recording fees on that?
Since the city was a party, we looked back to the original transaction and it was not exempt.
Okay.
So we paid those.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else as relates to claims? We'll do a roll call vote.
Johnson?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Department head reports. We'll start with you, Dick.
If I can get sat down. Good morning. June twentieth, I visited with the people at Northern Truck. We've had some separation on the box liner material of the new truck. And they're gonna square it away for us. It's kind of a mystery issue. Also, talked to farmer down by Elkton. If you remember, this is when they had their first significant rainfall, thinking that the culvert was too high under our road. And again, it was just a lot of rain that pooled up in the field. There's no problem. June twenty-first, talked to a gentleman about the right-of-way south of Lake Ponce where they were gonna have an auction. And tried to explain to him some of his options he might have there, if he had bought the property or would buy the property. Also, visited the site of Windsor Township's projects that they have not started yet, but I wanna continue to monitor that. And then also, there was a spot on Highway five that looked like transmission line had been plowed under the road, but it wasn't. It was an approved utility upgrade. Then on the twenty-fifth, I looked at further water issues throughout the county. One thing that's pretty common, when we continue to have rain, the culverts and possible improvements to culverts come to be quite regular. The thing that's difficult to explain to people is when the water is running pretty substantially, it's not the time to be working on your culverts. You know, it'd be nice to recognize the problem, maybe make plans for a remedy to your problem. But there's probably a much better time than when it's running full to think about doing any work to culverts. June twenty-sixth, I went to the STIP meeting up at First District Office in Watertown. They didn't have anything really different than what has been in the plan for quite a few years. Again, these are just DOT projects, so it's just kinda so that I have some information if people would ask or whatever, but it was well-attended. The twenty-seventh, we had our underground fuel tank tested at the shop and all those results were good from that. On the second, this Monday, the DOT sent the authorizations to be signed to go to bids for our projects on South Seventy-seven. I will get them on the agenda for the next meeting. But again, that won't go to bid until we get those in. So it's unfortunate that we didn't make it a little bit sooner. Then also, starting next week, they'll be doing the borings out on Highway twelve, the Sinai Road for that bridge. So that will help that process move forward. And then just on miscellaneous notes, the other projects, the small boxes and the deck are moving forward, probably not as fast as I would like, but I've been staying on top of talking with the people from Forterra and making sure that they're aware of our concern for getting this done in as soon as possible, really. But other than that, unless you have any questions.
We do have the one be it noted item, too, under the highway report, that there was one item that was listed for surplus and error at the last meeting. And so we need to remove that, so that Malden TAC trailer, three-hundred gallon TAC tank.
So noted.
And that's an agenda item, right? Okay.
Anything further? Any questions for Dick? Marty?
Morning.
Morning.
I'll try to be quick. Inmate population is still staying down. We're at twenty-nine. And so that's a workable number to get some cleaning done and those types of things. So, which has been, it's been kinda welcomed, the trend for the last two months have been that the numbers are down. Twenty-four-seven still seems to stay up there. We have a hundred and forty-nine participants. There is, we have seventeen on the SCRAM bracelet that come in once a week. The PBD has come in twice a day. Drug patch, I have fifteen on drug patches. They come in once a week. I have forty-eight on UAs that come in twice a week. I have seven on GPS that we're tracking. So the ones that we keep on GPS and, yeah, we're trying to do what we can. The people that need to be in jail are in jail and the ones that need to be out working are out working and supporting their families and stuff. Just quickly, on June twenty-fifth, Brookings Empowerment, we're, we met at the library. There was probably twenty-five or thirty of us talking about mental illness and so forth. And the CIT training, we have decided that we are going to bring the CIT, we are gonna start doing the training in Brookings. We have enough expertise to do that. And so this will help the police department, because I don't believe anyone, I don't think anyone, so far, none of the officers are certified with CIT. And it's an issue getting them for a week-long course. But we're gonna be able to, we're gonna pull it in and do it in Brookings. And we have a lieutenant from the Yankton Police Department that heads it in Yankton. And he's helping us get it, get it, get it going. Now, he does, he's a veteran. His name is Burgelson, I believe, Lieutenant Burgelson. He's a veteran. He does the section on veterans. Is, when you're dealing, it seems like when you're dealing with a veteran with mental illness, they only wanna talk to another veteran, almost. Well, anyway, he's, he'll do a segment on how to deal with veterans that are dealing with mental illness if we come in contact in the field on a call and so forth. So, anyway, so that's, I guess that's kinda exciting to bring that training to Brookings. You know, we're gonna do it, get our own officers and people trained, and then we'll maybe offer it to surrounding agencies. But we'll do it for us now and then we may offer it later. Now, the other thing, the bad news is, is I hate to hit you up with this, but I need fifty thousand dollars.
Isn't it closer to sixty?
It might be. I thought I would start. IT came to me, and I know we've been having issues with our in-car cameras, but I thought we could get by, I thought I could get by another year before we got, get the camera, get new cameras. But we, we need to replace them, 'cause they're, they're starting to, they're starting to poop out on us. They don't make that anymore, the cameras. You know, it's just like computers. Every two or three years, they come up with new technology. And now the warranty's off them. And the warranty's off the body cameras also. And they don't make that, the camera, the body camera that I have now with the officers wear on their bodies, that, they don't make that anymore either. So one of the big problems I have with the system I got now is that it's two different system. So I have to have two different supply, or keeping the evidence and so forth. If we go to a new camera, the body camera, some of the, Sean's been researching already some companies that have the in-car cameras along with the body camera. So then our evidence is all, and it's, in the long run, it's gonna save us some money if that. Well, anyway, and Sean can come out, but I don't think you probably wanna hear it all. Sean, I can tell you all the things that we're having problems with our cameras right now. But it's kinda critical with our body cameras. As you know, nationwide, these body cameras have saved my department some grief on customer complaints. I go back to the camera, you know, and it shows that my deputy followed policy and those types of things. So, and then with the incidences that we're having now, it's just, it's just one of those important things that we have. Now, one of the things is, is that both the in-car cameras that I have and the body cameras that I have have all been on grants. So this is the first time, actually, that we've had to pony up for cameras. Otherwise, the Attorney General's office gave me, back when we got in-car cameras, was thirty-six thousand dollars. And the Attorney General's Drug Fund bought those. And the, when we went to body cameras, the Attorney General bought them for fifty-five hundred. So, anyway.
Are you talking about replacing both the in-car cameras and the body cameras?
Yes, it'll be one unit.
It'll be one unit?
That one unit. So that is gonna save us on storing the evidence. And we don't have to, have to have two separate ways to store evidence. Now, the companies come out with a body camera that goes with the in-car camera also.
Have you, have you been talking at all with the state's attorney's office about this?
No.
And here's, here's the thing, I understand if we have to replace them, we have to replace them. But we don't have a system right now that flows throughout our whole system smoothly because of, everybody's got a different piece of the computer stuff, your office, state's attorney's office, and the defense attorneys. State's attorney's office is still mailing the videos out to people. And I'd really like us to see when we start looking at buying a new program, that we get a program, that those can be sent by email or another digital means as opposed to what we're doing, so we're more efficient in that. But it'd be nice if you had a conversation with Sean about how all that flows through the state's attorney's office.
And if Sean wants to come out, he may have already.
Uh-huh. And we don't have to have that conversation today, but is that?
Does that all go through Zerker?
No.
It doesn't?
There's some, some of it does, but not, not all of it, no. No.
We just have some gaps in our loop in how we transfer the information from law enforcement to the different places it's gotta be. And I don't know how it's working with the court, because that's changed. And maybe that's all smooth, but, but I know between the attorneys, it's not. And it'd be nice if we incorporated.
I agree, 'cause it's gonna save them a lot of time. It saves me a lot of time, because we still have to download and do some things and.
And then the city of Brookings, their, the police department, do, they all have body cameras and in-car cameras also?
Yeah, they're, yes.
And if your system?
And they're looking at, they had body cameras that I started out with. And they were just, they're not very expensive and stuff, but he's switching. But I don't know exactly what, what company he's going with right now.
And again, if, if they're looking at switching and we're looking at switching and we want everything to work well with the state's attorney's office and the defense attorneys in the court, it'd be nice, maybe to kinda coordinate some of that.
Well, absolutely. Absolutely.
I don't know if the mayor heard that. I said that if the city of Brookings is looking, the police department's looking at changing their system and we're looking at changing our system, and we want all that software to work well with the state's attorney's office and the courts and the defense attorneys, it might be worth having a conversation together about it.
And we, and we have had one company had come in already and demonstrated, and he also demonstrated over at the police department, too. And it's a system, I think it's a little over six thousand dollars per system. And that includes the video camera for the car and the body warrant, so.
Right.
So we're, and I think that only makes sense, is that we, that we, we might get a better deal, too, when we.
So you need about ten systems, then, is what you're saying?
Pardon?
Nine or ten systems is what you need, then?
Yeah, I'm looking at eight systems.
So with that?
Marty, when you look at, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna ask, Stacy, is that something you're gonna incorporate for our meeting on Monday in budget?
If you would like us to, yes, we can discuss that on the night during the budget meeting.
But is nineteen, I mean, how soon do you need to do this?
Well, I would, we're gonna, you know, they're functional right now, so I'm hoping that we can get by till twenty-nineteen.
To look at nineteen, okay.
Yeah.
Again, this is probably a nineteen budget request, and is there something we probably should put on our agenda on Monday to take a look at adjusting your budget request, obviously, by that amount? Secondary to that, I'm sure you're gonna go out and look for some grant opportunities.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Highly encouraged.
Yep.
We highly encourage that. Obviously, if we're looking at system for the city and the system for the county at the same time, maybe those two grant applications go to the same location. I'm not sure how that works. But if, obviously, you can't have any information on Monday of what type of grants might be available or out there. And so we're gonna have to look at this as a budget line item to secure and then adjust accordingly as those grants come in. So encourage you to, if you have any information on Monday that will help us determine what grants might be available, it'd be appreciated.
I'll check with, I'll check with highway safety. We've already applied for our twenty-nineteen, and of course, I didn't, we didn't put any, anything in that one for, most of that is overtime for alcohol offenses and so forth. So, but I'll check with highway safety to see if there's any money available.
Or any other grant opportunities that might be out there through the state or state attorneys.
I'll even tap into the Attorney General again and see if he'd be willing to, willing to give us some more money. He did give us seventy-five hundred dollars for the drug dog. And again, we're, we haven't secured one yet, but they were in Holland, the country of Holland looking. But they, they didn't, Highway Patrol has first dibs on the dogs right now, so, but.
All right.
But that should be, that shouldn't be an issue, that'll be funded, so.
Anything else for the sheriff?
That's probably enough, right?
Thank you.
Okay.
Vicki?
Good morning.
Morning.
We're busy in our office implementing some of the legislation that came into effect on July first. So we've gotten a lot of different forms from the state that we have to use for motor vehicles with different license plates, historical plates, special interest plates, rear plates, that type of thing. So we're all getting familiar with those. One thing that we, that takes effect July first is if you are coming in to transfer a mobile home, you do not have to pay a year ahead for the mobile home tax unless it's being moved, either in town or out of county. So that is a good thing for our office, because we don't have to figure the advanced taxes on those and collect those. And I think it will be better, because a lot of times, people don't have enough money to pay for this year's and next year's taxes. So then the mobile homes do not get transferred and they're not in the right people's name. So hopefully, that will alleviate some of that problem. And also, there's refunds now up to ninety days for just a regular license plate if it was purchased in air. But you have to bring in the actual registration with the tags already on there. And you have to fill out a form, and then it gets sent into the state and we do a check after the state's approved it. So that is something that's new, too, that there is non-commercial refunds available for ninety days. And another thing that took effect is before women veterans could get veterans' plate, but it didn't say women on there. So now there's a plate that if you wanted to say it, says women veteran. So that is something new. And like I said, they could still get the plates before, but it was, didn't say women on there. So now that was added. And also, on the agenda today, there's some surplus items that Jenna's getting ready for the surplus sale. So we are going to be declaring those surplus today. And hopefully, we'll get the sale set up online again, like in July, August at the latest, whenever we can get everything on. But just to kinda give you a heads up there. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning. Haven't sat in this hot seat in a while. So I think I know most of you from either previous life or met you this morning. So I'm Kristin Heissmeyer. You guys have me as your director of Outdoor Adventure Center. So a little update, today is day seven for me, but it seems like it's already been about a month. So let's give you an update of what's happened in the last seven days. We have done some different things with the train system. We had a humidity issue in the gun range, so we have taken that. We found that there was a leak in the condenser. And so we've resolved the humidity issues from ninety-two percent in our gun range down to sixty-seven percent. So we don't have to advertise this as a safari hunt and put an elephant down the, down the range there. We do now have the fans programmed to run intermittently throughout the night, so that's gonna create less of a stagnant air environment. We will have to look at in the fall, pressurizing the lines and going through and actually finding out where that leak is. But that's gonna have to be a fall event, preferably when it's not so hot out there. We are working on fall programming, but for July, we are running free youth classes throughout the month in BB guns and archery. We're working with multiple outlets to go ahead and get that out to the community. And we are working on a sportsman show for the first or second week of November, working with all the community partners. And there will be, as I worked with Jennifer Johnson yesterday at the CBB, a grant for part of that advertising, as it's a first-year event. We're also looking at a volunteer appreciation barbecue, September twenty-second. This is gonna be in conjunction with United Ways Week of Impact. So we'll not only be celebrating our volunteers, our RSOs, our range safety officers, as well as all the volunteers that are helping out with United Ways Week of Impact. The last thing we're working on right now is our rebranding with a new slogan that really is kinda catching that essence of what we're doing, you know, promoting that safe and responsible shooting sports and the education piece of it. Any questions on my first seven days?
Wow. Are you busy?
It's every day is an adventure, so.
That could be the motto.
Yeah. Yes, it is.
We appreciate your coming. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a regularly scheduled agenda item. At nine o'clock, we're just a minute or so ahead, and I think we'll go ahead and start with that. We had on our agenda discussion and possible action on the Twentieth Street South interchange. And at this time, I'm going to ask if there's anyone here to speak to this issue. And since I know the mayor in particular is here for that, I'm gonna ask him to come up first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, commissioners, staff, my name's Keith Corbett, if you didn't know, mayor of Brookings. And I'm here to speak to the Brookings City Council's support for the Build Graph grant. I believe you all have a resolution in your packet, Resolution eighteen dash forty-nine. Last Tuesday evening, on the twenty-sixth of June, the city council enthusiastically and unanimously supported the committing of funds to, not to exceed three-point-six million dollars or twenty percent of the grant. We realize the value of this grant, obtaining this grant, what this will do to Brookings. It's, as one council member said, it's truly a game changer for us, economic development. And I'm not just speaking to the city of Brookings, because we know we're speaking to Twentieth Street South and an interchange at. 20th Street South and an interchange at that location, but we also know that there's a road called 214th Street, which certainly a lot of us are concerned with as it goes into Aurora, so. Stand by for questions, Madam Chair.
Anybody have any questions for the mayor?
You can save them, there's a couple of other people here that would love to deal with them, I'm sure.
And the city, in its resolution, is committing 3.6 million, is that correct, the project?
Up to $3.6 million and, well, 20% of the grant, ma'am.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Mr. Hooton, were you going to kind of explain that grant to us?
Morning, I'm Al Hooton, Director of Brookings Economic Development Corporation. We've been enlisted to work alongside the engineer in preparing the application for the Build Grant. This is a, Build is a new name for the Tiger Grants that the federal government has had that are all transportation-related. The grant application is due on July 19th, so time is running short, still waiting for some information on the engineer that we need. They're gonna be doing some of the transportation, a couple pages of narrative, and then the benefit cost analysis, which is probably one of the more important pieces of the application. If they can't show a, a good benefit cost ratio, then chances of this being funded minimize quite a bit, so. Leanne had asked me to come and visit a little bit about the project component, so as I have the application drafted right now, and this could change a little bit depending on language the engineer might suggest, that there would be three pieces to the project. One is the overpass over the interstate, then there would be the connecting roads, so 20th Street on the city side and 214th Street on the county side that would connect the overpass to 34th Avenue and 22nd Avenue, and then the ramps. And with this particular project, they're looking at trying to do the ramps inside the state and local right-of-way, so that they don't have to deal with right-of-way issues, and also minimizes some of the environmental impacts with the ponds down in that area. So, application is due the 19th, it has to be submitted on grants.gov, which is electronic filing system. Hopefully, I will have the information early next week from the engineer so we can finish the writing and try and get started on getting that uploaded onto their site toward the end of next week. I believe they said the applications, they will decide and make funding, or decide on the funding, anyway, which projects will be funded by about the middle of December of this year, so we should know by the end of the year whether or not we're successful. And I think, you know, we've talked about this before in our conversations with city and county representatives, that there is no match that's required for rural projects. This is the first year that the federal government has instructed the Department of Transportation not to evaluate local match, so technically, that doesn't count, but in speaking to the engineers that are much more familiar with this particular application than I am, they have been told that your score will increase if you have proven financial commitments, so whatever that means. I did do, you know, quite a bit of reviewing of prior funded projects, just, you can look at everything that's been funded over the past eight, nine years. There are, in rural applications, there are grant, or projects that have been funded 100%, but they range from that all the way up to well over 50% local match. So, you know, a lot of this really depends on the safety, safety and state of repair of the road, conditions, and the travel-related economic benefits, so just because we have land to develop that doesn't necessarily mean that that's gonna be the thing that pushes us over the edge to be funded, it really comes back to travel time savings, reductions in injuries, loss of life, those kinds of things. That's all part of the work the engineer is doing, so I haven't seen that yet. So, any other questions for me?
I mean, Al, when you talk about benefit cost ratio in your engineering department, are we working with HDR?
HDR.
Okay, 'cause that's, I think, who did the original traffic studies and, and on this bridge. What's the estimated total cost at this point? Obviously, we'll never know until it gets built, but.
You know, I haven't seen that information from the engineer. The study that was done two years ago, I think, placed the overpass at about 14 million, and then the ramps were another four to four and a half million, so that's two years old, so I'm guessing somewhere in that 18 to $20 million range.
Does that include 20th Street to the interchange and also from the interchange to 34th, then?
Correct, yeah, that had the extensions in it.
That extension was in the beds, 'cause that was a concern of mine that, you know, obviously, the county has some expense over on that side of the road, 'cause it's not, not really a road over there right now.
Right.
It's kind of a abandoned, whatever you wanna call it, unimproved gravel, obviously, there's nothing there to build on. So when the engineers are working on their benefit cost ratio, what exactly are they looking at? I mean, you mentioned a few things, traffic, fuel savings, blah, 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 but not necessarily economic development along 214?
No, economic development is not a primary factor in that benefit cost analysis, so it's gonna be life safety-related issues, you know, reduction of traffic accidents, reducing injuries. It, you know, by putting the road or the interchange in, there would be travel time savings for commuters from Brookings to the east side of the interstate or Brookings south, or traffic coming south, commuters coming south, you know, into Brookings, so there's, you know, both an environmental savings there and greenhouse gas emissions, you know, plus travel time savings, which is an economic benefit. They, you know, safety is a, I don't wanna say that we, we don't want deaths and, and don't want to have those as a way to help justify the application, but those carry a lot of weight. If there are, are traffic-related deaths because of the transportation system, that's a big factor in the evaluation on these. So it's, it's those kinds of things. They may be able to incorporate, you know, extending the life of 22nd Avenue, in part because of the movement of traffic over the interstate or onto the interstate versus the 22nd Avenue, same for the 32nd Avenue. Overpass could extend the life of the bridge, so that could be part of that cost-benefit analysis.
Do we get any analysis from the state DOT on that theory?
I, I don't know.
As part of the application, is there, is the cost-benefit ratio, I mean, if you, if we're stating that, can we get some?
Yeah, that would, I would have to defer to the engineers on that.
Yeah, probably a lot to gather before the 19th, obviously. The second question is, is as we look at the county side of it, from going east, and as 214 goes towards Aurora, obviously, not an improved road at this point in time, and as we look at all the other safety benefits and things, 214 would be a consideration the county would have to look at after the completion of the bridge, 'cause right now it just goes to 34th, and you still have to go north or south to get to, to get to Aurora.
Right.
You can go south and get to the industrial park, obviously, pretty easily. That's a big concern of mine, is that at some point in time, in order to make this cost-benefit ratio really work, 214 has to make some sort of an improvement, and that's a pretty heavy expense for the county. Right now, they think the number that we're talking about is about a $2 million commitment from the county, in addition to the city's $3.6 million commitment. And I don't have a problem with that, because if we can get that part of it from the bridge to 34th completed, that was probably about a million dollars out of our pocket, anyway, if we can have some other, other funding available. But you'd made a statement that, that the rural part of this grant does not require any matching funds.
Right.
But we're going to take a opportunity to try and throw matching funds at it to see if this elevates, kind of like our bridge improvement grants, we've thrown extra money at it to get our, our numbers up on the state's bridge improvement grants to, to get bridges done that we needed to get done, so is it, but there, they encouraged us to do that, well, by a point system, but there's no point system here that we know about at this particular point in time if we do make these commitments.
Yeah, I, you know, I have not seen a point system, there, they don't describe a point system in the notification of funding opportunity that comes out in the federal register, they do describe the criteria that they look at to evaluate the application, and that, you know, goes back to those things we've talked about. In the Tiger Grants and the Build, new Build Grant Program, as I said, there is no requirement for local match for a rural application. However, all of those that I have reviewed, for the most part, have matched. There are some that have been funded that don't provide match, but in those applications where I've been able to find the complete application review, they're talking about a lot of traffic, you know, three or four accidents at an intersection or a section of roadway that have resulted in deaths, which are primary factors in the, the evaluation of the grant request. So I did have this conversation with the engineer, you know, should we provide match? You know, should we just do this as 100% grant? Their feeling was, and they've done a number of these, was that even though it is not a mandate, that it would be very helpful in the review process. It points to commitment, local commitment to get the project done, and then also to readiness to proceed, which is a big factor in this, if you have to be committed to having this project ready to bid by end of September of 2020, I believe it was, for this.
To go back again a little bit to the engineer comment that you made, that they have worked on several of these types of applications or projects, and noticed that there were funding requests, or additional funding requests from local matches, any idea how successful they were on any of their?
I, I don't know, Mike, I, I didn't ask that question.
Might be interesting to know if they've had any success at any of these applications, and if they haven't, what was the problem with them? Well, they probably will never know, probably won't tell them what the problem was with the application. HDR also had done a traffic study previously before the DOT actually committed funds and redid 22nd, or 6th Street and the bridges. Are we using that data from HDR, or did they do a supplemental study after that, that we're gonna submit with this application?
Well, you know, they did the, they did the initial study that, considering, Darrell England could probably speak to this better than I can, but that considered the commuter traffic from the west side of Brookings over to the east side industries, so that was one study that was done. Then there was a, the cost study that was done in combination with Banner and HDR Engineering, and then the city's most recent comprehensive plan, or the comprehensive master, or transportation plan that was completed by HDR was also done, so that, that would be the most recent document, I think, for, for updated traffic information. And they're still working on some traffic information updates, that's part of what I'll get next week to include in this.
Is there an opportunity in this grant process for us to answer any questions they may have as they look at the application, or is it, we provide it, and hopefully, we've given them all, all the information they need?
Yeah, I don't know how to answer that, Mike, I, you know, I'm submitting, I've submitted them a draft of everything that I've written at this point, and what I've received back have just been, you know, some fairly generic comments, looking for a little bit more explanation, but.
I guess that's what I'm looking at, is are they gonna ask us for further explanation and give us an opportunity to improve our presentation at some point?
Yeah, so I, as soon as, you know, I, I've sent them everything I've written, I'm working on maps to go along with it right now. I've done a little bit more research on commuter traffic to and from Brookings that I'll be sending down to them today to help with their cost-benefit analysis.
Okay.
And then until I see what they write, I'm not exactly sure what the holes are that I'm gonna have to fill in the application.
And I apologize for a lot of questions, but there's a lot of questions out there, and I wasn't obviously involved in your meetings prior to this, so, you know, I appreciate you answering up, up front, thank you.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, do you have an idea when we would have an answer from them?
It would be mid-December.
Okay.
I think about the 18th, or there's a designated date that they have to have made their funding decision, it was mid-December sometime.
Okay. I should think that busing schoolchildren over to, to the new school, to Prairie.
Dakota Prairie.
Dakota Prairie, would, would have a huge impact on the safety issues, I think we, you know, obviously, I'm sure you've all used that to weigh heavily, but I, I think that that, I mean, we don't, we don't have a lot of safety issues out in that rural area, you know, so I, I would hope that, that HDR would use that pretty heavily.
So one of the, you know, we have had that discussion, one of the challenges that we have is that we're not paving the road to Aurora, so the, the argument is, do you send the school bus on a, an improved gravel road to get to the interchange, or do you send, send them on paved roads? I did have the conversation with the engineering firm about whether or not we should try and include that, to, that extra two miles or two and a half miles in the application and request grant funds to do that as well. Their response was that there haven't been any studies done on that road, they were afraid that the environmental work that would need to be done would hold it up, so we wouldn't get it done in time to apply.
We have on 213, and we've done environmental studies.
Yeah, so.
On the balance of 213.
On the balance 213.
If, if that would help.
That's a possibility, I can speak with them about that.
That's the question I had, Al, in the process of the grant, are they gonna come back and suggest that 214th from 34th to Aurora be taken over and improved before, and you know, they would approve this grant?
You know, I don't know, worry. I, I don't know if there's much of a negotiation process with this, you know, they, I would expect that, you know, at best, if, if DOT was gonna negotiate with the county, the city and the county, it would be that you either have ramps or you don't.
Mm-hmm.
I, I don't think they're gonna, gonna hold it, too, you know, we can build the argument just based on commuter traffic and, and growth patterns in Brookings for the need to be able to move people from the west side to the east side of the interstate and back and forth. You know, we can demonstrate economic growth opportunity, you know, related to opening up that interchange there and the land around it, but yeah, I just, I don't see them coming back and saying, well, you need to pave 213th or 214th as a part of the project.
But that is interesting, we do have all the work on 213.
We do.
Okay.
It's just that.
And it's more current than the.
Yes, it is, it's very current, and the, we haven't done it because the environmental impact is, is quite large, and that's been the reason that we've kind of held up, much to our chair's chagrin, but.
So, so Stephanie, is that a, a negative, a large negative impact, or just a large?
It's a lot of money.
It costs about an extra $1 million because you would need, am I saying this right, 26 culverts on that because of hydrology?
Yeah. But, but we do have the study, if that's needed.
I'll pass that along, I wasn't aware of that. Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have somebody else that would like to come up?
Good morning, I'm Al Kurtenbach, and I'm wearing a couple of hats this morning, I guess. First of all, I currently serve as Chair of the East Brookings Business and Industry Association, and that board authorized me to meet here and advocate for, for this project, and so that's one, and the second is that I'm involved in doing some development work over in Aurora, and we had a kind of a planning session over there a week ago Monday with a few of the county commissioners and a couple of the people from the planning and zoning, and they're very much supportive of this, and they agreed that they would provide a letter, a resolution of support, and they meet, I think, a week from yesterday, I think, so that would be important, and the other thing is that the, the mayor of Aurora told me that they have secured funding to pave the half-mile of 214th Street that extends from Broadway Avenue West, one and a half mile, so that would be, you know, physical improvement that, that they would be doing. And then, speaking with other business people here, we, our endeavor would be to raise a match as well of between 1.8 and 2 million dollars, in that, on that order, to, to help again with, with demonstrate that the business community is supportive, and so I'd be pleased to try to answer questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much. Anybody else wanna come up and speak? Do we have anyone else in the audience that wanted to speak on this issue? Do we have anyone else in the audience that wanted to speak on this issue?
I won't take much time, but this is a project that we've been after and chasing for a long time.
I'm going to ask you to say your name for the people.
Oh, Darrell England, retired engineer, mostly golfing and fishing these days. But it, it's a project that we've been trying to put out and get completed for a long, long time. It actually probably goes back all the way to Roger Prunty administration when he was a mayor. He always wanted to get another interchange. And it's, it only makes sense as a city develops. And we've heard earlier from HDR that as you move south of 20th, the impact for an interchange becomes less and less. So 20th is, is obviously the, the street that we would need to have an interchange. And so I just ask your support for it.
Anyone have any questions for him?
Yes. Any questions?
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak on this issue? Commissioners? I, I will tell you that Commissioner Krogman could not be here today. He did authorize me to tell you that he would support the county committing to $2 million if the grant is received from the bridge program. Did I say bridge program? Build program, excuse me. We do.
And I'm fine with that. We have a little bit of time to save the money, which is how we've always operated. And I, I, it's going to cost us a lot more than 2 million because we're going to have to hard surface something, whether it's 213, the rest of 213 or 214. But I think as long as we have a little bit of time to set that money aside, we, we should start doing that at the end of 2018. And hopefully we'll have the money by the time we, we need it. Hopefully we'll need it.
Initially, we said we support this project. We thought that we would have to upgrade 20th from 34th to the interchange at the time. This grant does include that stretch of road, so I'm in favor of it also.
Again, the fact that it includes that section of road makes it a little easier for us because that's probably a million dollar project on its own. So 2 million out of this leaves about a million that we're kicking in extra. That doesn't take us to the middle of the interstate, but you know, it gives us a, a foot in the door. I like the idea that there may be some build funds available. If there weren't build funds available, this really becomes a tough project to finance, both for the city and the county. So I support the application. I support the 2 million dollars to make sure we got a, a good application process and see if it flies. Devil's in the details as far as the application is concerned. And I know you've got a lot of work ahead of you, and I commend you for spending hours on this and trying to get it done. And I apologize if I asked too many questions, but I think the public's got a lot of questions. And this is a forum to get that out a little bit, to answer some of those questions. So I think that we did that today, and I can support the 2 million.
And I support the 2 million. So I have a procedural question. I believe that you would like a resolution similar to what the city did so you can put it in the application. We're working on a really short timeline because that's what the federal government allowed for this application. Can we approve a resolution similar to what the city did? And you all authorized me to sign that so that it can be submitted with the application? Would that be?
We only need a consensus, don't we?
No, I think we should have a vote to authorize the action to approve a resolution that's...
We've got possible action. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I think you've got the legal authority to proceed.
All right, I'll make a motion that we do a resolution similar to what's in front of us from the city supporting this project.
Second.
Let's do a roll call vote on this. Was there any further discussion?
Do we need the numbers? Do you need the 2 million stated in the resolution?
Right. As you look at the resolution that the city put out, basically all you're going to change is, is where is the county of Brookings or Brookings County? And then the amount of the money.
Not to exceed 2 million.
Not to exceed 2 million dollars. And then the 20, or 20% of the total project cost, which you want. That's all the changes you really need to make to the resolution, in my opinion.
You okay on that, Stacy? Because you'll be preparing that.
Steve will probably.
And, and we should ask for public comment on that motion.
Okay. Anybody in the audience that would like to add to anything we're discussing here? In particular, the motion for the resolution. There is no public comment. Okay? Anybody else have anything to say before we vote?
Thank you to the elite team for coming in and talking to us.
Appreciate it. Okay, let's call the roll.
Miller?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Let's see, I think Bob, you're up next.
Good morning. It looks like on June 21st, I went down to Sioux Falls. We had a crisis management for school-based incidents in Sioux Falls. And there was a representative from the Brookings School District there, which was good. And a few other, not Brookings County-based, but a few other small school districts were there to, to learn how to do crisis management for schools. On June 22nd, we pulled the, the command trailer out to the Brookings Gun Club for the Amateur Radio Relay League. That's also known as the Brooky, the Amateur Radio Club that we use as our first responders. They have an annual field day event. And I happened to go out there just before it shut down. And when they say the word amateur, they're, they're contacting people throughout the world just here from Brookings County. So I think they'd be a real good asset for it, and that's why we support them here in Brookings County. I did attend the State Emergency Response Committee meeting over at the SD DOT building on Monday last week. We'll bypass the pipeline grant and talk about that at the end. The city of Bushnell has submitted paperwork to my office showing that they spent $4,188.85 to hook up a severe weather siren in their community. And speaking of siren tests, we have our monthly test today at 1:00 PM, just for your information. And I came to the board to, typically, we, we pay one-third on the small communities or any community that submits the billing to us. And I typically take that out of my budget. And then at the end of the year, if I'm short, we, we put that in the justification for coming up short. But typically, I get a, we can, I get a consensus now, and then we put it on the agenda for next, next meeting, I believe. And then we will have the authorization to pay them if the board approves.
Is it usually a third or is it a half, Bob?
A third.
How else is it split then? The city pays two-thirds or?
Yes. The last time we did this was white, probably two, two years ago.
That was the city paid?
I think the city paid. I think the fire department there might have kicked some...
Right. The fire department split the other third, I believe. There's no fire department in Bushnell.
Well, it's, the white fire department supports Bushnell, but I doubt if they're going to pay, pay a third into it. I think we need to keep our presidents at one-third personally, just, just to keep it across the board and be fair with everyone.
Do we have a consensus on that?
Sign with me.
Okay.
So we'll bring that back to you. June 27th, we had a joint jurisdiction meeting. We are moving along with the joint jurisdiction. You know, that's, that's, apparently it's not going to be done by July 1st, but we're, we are making some progress on the mining, mining part. We, we're just about to the point where we're, we're working on a mining subcommittee, trying to work out some details on that. And the subcommittee itself is fixing the meet again. And we're going to get into a room and have a board like you got behind you with, with the regulations on it and, and what we want to add to it. Some people want to do stuff that just isn't allowed by state law. And you literally have to show them in writing where it's not allowed by state, state law. So we'll, we're getting there. Our next meeting's coming up, I believe, next week. There was an airport review ordinance meeting the same day and, or a day after that. And the airport's got a new manager, and they're doing a good job, it looks like, there. I did turn in a travel request for a FEMA class on Public Information Officer, which is in Anderson, Alabama. I applied for the same thing last year. And Atlanta had a big airport fire, so I couldn't make it to Atlanta. Couldn't even make it to Anderson, Alabama because Atlanta had shut down. I contacted the school, and, and they said they can't just keep the old application on file. So I submitted another travel request, and I'll put the paperwork. But I wanted to make sure you're aware of it and approve of it before I... These kind of, these kind of courses, they are away from Brookings, but they're, they pay, they pay the whole dime. And you go down there and you get to meet a lot of different people and learn different things. Is there any issue of that particular class? Thank you. July 12th to 16th, I, July 12th to 16th will be arts in the park, excuse me. The command trailer will be used by the police department during that timeframe. And I'll work with Mr. Burke so he's aware of it. I won't be here for, on July 12th to help him move it. So the police department will have to come and move it. But I work with the highway superintendent, so he's aware of that. We do have a NACO convention starting next week we'll be going to. And we've got a planning committee meeting tonight. And the last thing I bypassed was the, we did have our tabletop exercise in Hanson County on June 30th, which was Saturday. We had a grand total of 18 participants. And the actual tabletop itself, I feel, was informative. We, we put out some good information. We, how to get a turnout, I have no idea. I'll, I'll put it in my after-action review. But we did send out almost 200 postcards two different times. And we invited county commissioners, planning people, city clerks, everyone we could think of. We had, I don't, I didn't put a, I'll give you the final update later on. But as far as negative feedback, there's really no negative feedback that areas of need improvement is low attendance, nothing we could do about that. They'd like to see a deeper dive into ICS and resource management on responses. Some of that's just, on a four-hour tabletop, you just don't have time to get into everything. It says the instructor drove the entire exercise and allowed minimal input by the people who represent the pipeline operators. I'm guilty. I, I ran the exercise. It was my exercise. You have to have a facilitator on a tabletop, and you've got to keep it moving. Otherwise, you get stagnant and it goes off in the 100 different directions. And then the other area of an improvement was need Public Utilities Commission people for discussion. We invited the South Dakota Public Utilities Commission. They actually RSVP'd. They was coming. And the day before the meeting, they gave me an email and said they couldn't make it. So I think it was a success. Obviously, we need more people. We, we will have our second. The, the grant requires two tabletop exercises. Our second tabletop will be in September down in Yankton County. And that one would definitely have more than 18 people in it because it's a full-scale, it's a full-scale exercise going to be in conjunction with our tabletop. So it'd be a little bit of different format than what we had here. On the one in Alexandria, I did take my complete staff, like I briefed you before I went there. And I think it was good experience for them to use. We used our, our credentialing system, which is an ID tag system to check people in. And it's good to form the meet the other emergency managers throughout the area. And I think it was a success overall. Are there any questions?
I'd just like to make a couple of comments now instead of doing it when I do my report in that I did go to that, and it was in Alexandria. I myself think part of the low turnout was because it's part of, some people consider that part of the Fourth of July holiday, you know? And I think the fact that it was on a Saturday maybe, maybe impacted on that. But Bob and his staff, they, they really did do a great job. The credentialing system that Ray Lynn ran is that little machine that does the tags that if we actually have an emergency and we have to have people checking in, it works slick. It really did, did work out very well, so.
And the only way to keep it going is to use it in practice.
That's it, exactly. So that, it was all very, very helpful. I did the, the only thing that I came back with, and I hadn't really realized this from, this is the third pipeline training that I've gone to with Bob. And I didn't really realize that they don't necessarily notify dispatch right away when there's an incident because they go out and they check it out. And that didn't really come up in our prior exercises. So it might be four hours easily before dispatch gets notified. Now, the fire chief that was there from Alexandria said, well, he didn't want to know if they were just going to check out things. I think that's something we maybe need to discuss when we're doing a E911 meeting or, or something like that about our, when we get notified. And maybe there's just too many of them, but they said 20 in a year between Canada and someplace. I'm thinking that isn't so many that would be in our area. We maybe would like to be notified right away. But that might just be me and not a uniform thing.
I guess that would be up to our fire chief.
Exactly. And it just needs to be a conversation that we hold. Yeah. But it was a very good job. Thank you.
And you're welcome. And one thing to realize, that's the transmission side of the house. That's, that's the larger pipeline. A, a lot of ours, locally at least, the calls I get on the radio in my office is the distribution line. And those lines are, are, you know, could be an inch, the little plastic lines that run to the house. And, and people get their heat and gas stoves and gas water heaters. Those calls, we get almost immediately. As soon as, as soon as they get hit, they go to, typically to 911 gets those, and then they contact Northern, Northwestern Energy, so.
What came across clearly, I thought, in the discussion was they didn't want any media attention unless it was absolutely necessary. And, and that you have to balance with risk to the public.
And we tried to, we tried to explain that to them in plain English as much as I beat, I did, I did espound on that quite a bit, that we have to keep the public informed. And that's what the whole exercise is and, you know, our after-action will, will be driven by is... But a lot of it's just opening that communication up and, because I don't know if it's, it's... As, as we said during the tabletop, you know, we've got a, we've, their job is to make money. Our job's to keep our public informed. And there's happy, there's a medium in there that we have to be able to meet. And it may not be across the nation. It may be community by community by community. But we have to find out what that is and, and keep an open dialogue. I think just by keeping an open dialogue, you know, we met three of the transmission company representatives. And I think it's, even though it was a, a small turnout, I still think it was worth doing and...
And they were talking about the big pipelines.
The, the pipeline that, that from, the, the statement from Canada down to Texas, that was a 30-inch.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. And that's not in our county.
Yeah, that's not in, that, that company's not in our county.
All very interesting.
Yeah. And we'll keep, and we'll, we'll keep you informed on the, on the one in September and invite anybody that would like to come down, down to it. As, as that one progresses, I'll keep, I'll be able to tell you more about it as we go along. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to, first of all, thank you guys for opening up the deputy position. It's a much-needed position. And it, it makes things just flow a lot better when we have a department our size with, with more than just one person in it. I do know that the commission assistance office has provided me with some assistance. But it's quite a bit different than when you have a full-time employee that stays busy, you know, 90-some percent of the time. You know, a lot of times, you know, the five, 10 minutes at the end of the day, it's kind of a down period, or when you first get in. But overall, traffic is fairly busy there. One of the things that I did put in the pack at this time, I guess it's up there showing is the, this is the expenditures for our county. Now, this is based on zip codes. So if a veteran lives, say, has an Aurora zip code, then we would be counted. But if they have an Arlington one, would not necessarily mean that they would, would fall in here because that's more of a Kingsbury County. A couple of things that I would just like to, to point out. If you look from 15 to 17, you'll see that the number of veterans has been going down. But the total expenditures coming into Brookings is, well, last year was 12,313,000. So we have quite a bit coming in. So we have quite a bit coming in. The other number I think that's kind of important to look at is the last one on there, it was unique patients. Because almost everyone that goes to the VA hospital has to come through our office for the initial application process. So if you look on there, it was, you know, 660, then it was 654, and then the last one is 670. So we are having more people come in as our... The reason the number goes down, of course, is we have... Our World War II veterans are passing away at a fairly... At a high rate. There's not a whole lot of them left anymore is probably what we're running into. But I guess that just kind of shows that we do have a number of veterans and stuff coming in. And some of the processes can be fairly complicated, especially if we have a retiree who also has a spouse that was service-connected. So the retiree process, you have to go through DFAST and a series of processes there. One of those, a person coming in here, a survivor, a surviving spouse, those applications will usually take a two-hour process with the person in my office and then usually two- to three-hour follow-up. Last night, yesterday I had one. And so last night I was here until 6:30 because some of the stuff you have to fax in in the machines, it seems like the VA is notoriously... Their machines are notoriously busy. So what you have to do is you have to really kind of hit it during off-hours. And so, you know, 6:30 here makes it 4:30 in the West Coast, which they're usually winding down by that time so we can get it in there. And I guess I'm not willing to come in at 5 o'clock in the morning to fax that early. I'd do a little better if I stayed after 4:00 for supper. In the meantime, on the welfare side, I just wanted to kind of put some numbers out there. I started in 2010. I went back the three previous years to that. The numbers of application we normally get in are about 140 prior to my coming in. Right now, we're looking at around 160, 161 a year. Some years are, you know, quite a bit higher, some are quite a bit lower. This year, we're looking at, we got 84 so far at the halfway point. So as far as the welfare side of it, and these are applications that we actually take action on, not people that come in that we're able to find other funding such as low-income energy assistance, My Neighbor. We'll set up a lot of appointments that people won't make because they'll be able to get assistance from one of the other six or seven different non-county organizations that will assist them. So I guess without taking up any more of your time, I'd like again, thank you for opening the position and I look forward to having a new person onboard.
I just have one...
Yes.
I'm sorry, one question about the chart. You know, when it says in here the number of veterans?
Yes. The veteran...
Is that anybody that lives in the county that serves?
So the... All of these are based on ZIP code.
Okay.
Okay? Now, I have some veterans that live on the... As I always say, especially with Arlington, right? I said, well, if you live in Arlington, you're not in my county. But if you're deceased in Arlington, then yeah, you're in my county because the cemetery is on the side of the road. Actually, there's a large number of these people, of the veterans that, especially in the Arlington area, that won't necessarily come into the Brookings numbers on these charts. Because even though they come here, because a lot of them live in Arlington and do work in Brookings.
So when I look at the chart, and I think maybe I misread what we were looking at and tell me this.
Okay.
What this tells us is the VA expenditures by ZIP code, not the number of veterans that we have in our county.
Well, right. Except for the second line, or I mean, so the first line, okay?
Okay.
The first line is the estimated veteran population.
Okay. So that is the total estimated veteran population.
Yes, based on ZIP code.
Okay.
So the... Especially the... Around Ponset, okay? You know, we have part of our county is around Ponset. Almost none of those will fall into our ZIP code. They'll almost always fall either in Kingsbury or Hamlin County. And then we do have... We are a shopping center, if you like. And so we do have a number of the veterans that prefer to come in and see my office versus going to some of the other ones in the area. Almost all of Arlington people come over here.
Thank you.
And I can tell you that as the spouse of a veteran, Mike is busy enough, it is hard to get in, to get an appointment to. And the paperwork for the retired veterans is amazing. It's huge, what has to be done. And that veteran cannot do it without the assistance of the Veteran Service Officer.
And the reason I ask the question is I'm also a spouse of a veteran, okay? I thought that number would be bigger if it included all of the veterans in the county. That's why I was asking.
And normally, it's always used to be 10%. It used to always be about 10% of the population. But that was from World War II. And with our World War II veterans passing, you know, we have some of the Vietnam is probably the next largest group. And then, you know, you start to look at the Desert Storm. Of course, they are enduring freedom, Iraqi freedom. That's the reason, if you look on the education part of it, I didn't really cover that. If you'll notice in the education part, that is even going down, okay? Which means that we're having fewer students there. And that's part of the reason that the total population, in my feeling, is probably why it's kind of going down also.
And even our Vietnam-era veterans, which is what I'm married to...
They're going to start croaking too. Are not young anymore.
Yeah. It's very unfortunate that Vietnam did leave us with a lot of bad things.
And then we'll move on to regular business. Action to approve resolution... Excuse me. Action to approve Resolution 18-19, a resolution placing taxes on an uncollectible list. Move approval?
This is just a list that we received from the sheriff's office. They have... We gave them 120-some mobile homes to collect. And this is what came back as uncollectible, either because the mobile home itself is gone, no longer there, or burned down or whatever. And I did give you the total tax amount that this also... What the... I think there's 11 mobile homes, a total of $460 that we will take off the tax rolls.
So the sheriff did an excellent job.
They do an excellent job of collecting. We have very good relations with the sheriff's office and they do a good job. Just to kind of give you a little thing other than mobile homes, I took a NSF check over for motor vehicles on Friday about 9 o'clock and we had the money in our office by 11:30. And I can send letters, call people, whatever, and you don't hear anything. But it was motor vehicle licenses for two motorcycles and it's the Fourth of July weekend and they had it in there within two hours. So kudos to them. It helps a lot for our office.
Any further discussion on... All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item B, action to approve Agreement 18-73, a pictometry purchase agreement with Brookings Municipal Utilities.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
These next two are related. This is the agreements with the other entities that help us with the cost share with the pictometry. I haven't gotten the E-911s back yet, but I think that's because that board hasn't met since these have gone out. But the next two are BMU and the city, and that's their commitment to partnering with that project.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, action to approve 18-74. That'd be Agreement 18-74, pictometry purchase agreement with the city of Brookings. Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, action to approve Agreement 18-75, a five-year agreement with Johnson Controls Incorporated for preventative maintenance services for the city and county government center.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
My question, when I looked at this, was if we are to do something with... I can't think of the name of the company.
Well, I think you're talking about the guaranteed energy savings contracts. And we wouldn't necessarily... The companies that we have been in contact with, we would have to approve their request for qualifications. There are multiple companies that do exactly what they presented to us at the joint powers board meeting. So once we did the request for qualifications, then we would pick a company if we decide to go forward with a project like that. So Johnson Controls actually does those. They're one company that may submit a request for qualifications. I did visit with them about doing that, if that would affect this agreement. And they said, no, it would not. So there may be some minor changes that might have to take place, but overall, it would not affect this.
Okay. That was my concern.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item E, action to approve Agreement 18-76, a state of South Dakota Department of Public Safety Office of Emergency Management sub-recipient agreement between Brookings County and the South Dakota Office of Emergency Management for a hazard mitigation grant. Move approval?
Second.
Mr. Hill?
Yes, this is our last... Hazard mitigation grant was done in 2014. It's good for five years. 2019's the update. And Office of Emergency Management, Department of Public Safety went through and got us a grant. First district will be doing the actual pre-disaster mitigation, scheduling all the meetings. Having the meetings, my office would have to facilitate the meetings down here, provide spaces. The match of the grant itself would be the first district's. What we typically pay in the first district with our regular dues, there'd be no additional funding from us to have to pay the first district to do it. They did our last one, they did a good job. So I recommend we do it again with them.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item F, action to approve Agreement 18-77, a public use agreement between Brookings County and the South Dakota Department of Game Fish and Parks for use of the indoor gun range at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. Move approval?
Second.
I was just curious, Steve, did you have a chance to review these two agreements?
Yes, I did. I worked with Emmett Keizer in getting those resolved.
Perfect. Any further discussion? Anybody want to explain them for the listening public?
Well, these... Oh, go ahead. No, go ahead.
This one basically says that we will allow, have public hours and maintain the range for the gun range out at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. That's the gist of this one.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item G, action to approve Agreement 18-78, an agreement between Brookings County and the South Dakota Department of Game Fish and Parks Wildlife Division to enhance and maintain the existing indoor pistol and rifle range at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center. Move approval?
Second.
Any...
This one is another grant where we can submit costs for repairs and maintenance of the gun range out at the BCOAC for reimbursement by the Game Fish and Parks for up to 75% of the county expenditures. So the first grant, we awarded this grant that ended at the end of May and now this one starts again and runs, I believe, I think through June next year. So this is a good thing.
This is huge for us and it is wonderful to be able to partner with GF&amp;P.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item H, action to approve the quote from Bose Construction for $5,687.50 to finish the paving of the south parking lot of the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to add, this is on the south side. There was an area from the driveway coming into the outdoor area to the back of the BCOAC that was still gravel. I feel it's a pretty good quote to finish blacktopping that area. Took into consideration that the garbage trucks due back over there and this should handle the garbage trucks and everything. So we're still current... We're still currently working on the north parking lot. We're going to look at that also, but this is just the south side, so...
Great. And the advisory board did recommend approving this quote. So this did go before the advisory board at their June 25th meeting. And they are requesting that this be expensed out of our capital budget, not the BCOAC budget, but the capital budget, the 301 fund.
Is that... That's not necessarily part of the motion, is that correct?
No, I think that can be a separate discussion by the board on how you... If you agree to do it, how you want to pay for it.
So first of all, on the motion that we have in front of us, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, do we want to discuss where we're going to take the funds out of at this time?
I think you should do that because we can get going on this project immediately, but you have to give me direction on how you want to pay for it. And I think the board, if I recall the discussion correctly, is they wanted this to be reflected out of that capital budget and not the BCOAC budget so that they didn't inflate the expenses out at the BCOAC with capital-type projects. They wanted... They thought that this might not give a true reflection of the expenses that we're incurring out there when this is a capital project. The other thing is we are budgeting for the north parking lot out of the 301 fund as well, to do a much larger project with the paving of, potential paving of that. But this would be a similar, smaller-scale project being paid out of that fund. And in 2019, we're budgeting for this out of 301. So I think it's really, if you want this expense reflected in the OAC budget, I think that's a board philosophy.
Yeah, it was to keep it consistent. If we're doing a parking lot project, just to keep the... You know what? The way to do this would have been do the north and south at the same time, but at this time, it doesn't work out. It might suggest for us to keep it consistent and take it out of the same fund.
If we were doing a parking lot for any other department, like over at our Sinai Shop, for example, or something like that, would it come out of the 301 fund or would it come out of that department's fund?
301.
It would?
Yeah, we've done some paving, like over at the courthouse on the west side where we have the county parking and that came out of 301 several years ago. So it's not unusual.
Sure, it'd come out of the 301.
You have a consensus on that? We don't need a motion on that. Is that correct? All right. Item I, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for a general maintenance worker in the commission department.
Go move.
Second.
Stacy?
So I lost Tom to the jail and now I'm losing John to retirement. So the request is to, you know, to fill now John's position. And if you allow me to do that immediately and get people started so we can get people cross-trained, because we're going to essentially have two brand-new people. My other request for this, and then it's kind of more of an aside too, not so much with the request itself, but we just finished a week ago having this exact same job description posted. If it would be, if it's okay with the board, if I could potentially hire two out of the pool of applicants that we received rather than going through the advertisement process again to basically get a similar pool of applicants.
As long as it's same, same job description.
It's the same, yes. It's the same job description.
It makes sense. Why publish again? That is so expensive for us to do.
And I agree with that. I just think again, that when we have... I just think, again, that when we have both of our people leave, pretty much the same time, we're gonna hire two new people, that that might be a time for you to kind of look at how you've got responsibilities lined up and whether we've got it the way you want it, because now's the easiest time to change it, so.
Yeah, and it really works well the way we do have it. I don't know, with two brand-new people, you know, then I don't know what that will look like, but right now, it works really, really well with the two individuals that we have in that position, in those positions. So, yeah, I'm okay with how we're doing it currently.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Action to approve request to fill vacancy for a deputy director in the Veterans and Human Services Department.
Move approval?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item K, actions declare the K nine drug dog as surplus property to be sold to the handler for one dollar per. Now, here it says sheriff department policy, one of our other documents, it says county policy. I don't know which one would be the correct wording on that.
Is that in our county policy, or is that in your policy?
Okay, per the sheriff's department policy, might have been your report that said county.
Yeah, I might have.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
IT Sean paid for the dog.
Item L, action to declare items as surplus property to be sold via the county's upcoming online surplus auction. Move approval?
Second.
Vicky, did you want to add anything? You already touched on that.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything to add.
Any discussion?
And all items will be handled on the online auction, correct?
Yes, unless at the end, there was some things that get disposed of, but otherwise, everything will be on the online auction. It says, on the list, the second page of the list, there's some things to be disposed of, right? If you look up there.
Is, with this online auction, can you reserve a price on there, or not?
Yes. And I think most everything, we have a price on it, the lowest price.
Okay.
Any other questions? If someone wants to go to a website and see the online auction or bid, how do they do that?
In the past, I have updated the website to the county's website. And so I will be working with Michelle on getting those items to it. Something similar to what the city, the city of Brookings does. I will do something similar to that, so. And then I also send out the link to all the department heads. That's pretty much what I have, so I would take any suggestions if anybody has anything.
I guess the only concern I had is like with the cat loader in the truck, the dick would, I mean, protect those.
Oh, yeah, those bigger items, I would work with the department heads on seeing what the value is and the vehicles too. We check the value of it before we list a price.
Does that go out, then, once it goes on our website, does it also go on our Facebook page?
Yes, it does.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Commission Department Director Report.
I don't have too terribly much. A couple of things, there was, if some of you were around the courthouse last week, we had an accident at the courthouse where a gal ran over, she hit the gas instead of the brake and ran over one of the park benches. Luckily, she wasn't hurt, but ran over one of the park benches that was placed there by the farmer's market, and she also hit their electrical post. And so the farmer's market, it was kind of a three-pronged thing, because it tore up some of our grass, but really, that was the extent of the county's damage. The park bench was paid for by the farmer's market. The electrical pole, although we paid for the electricity, the pole itself was paid for by the farmer's market. And then the city park and rec got involved, because they're the ones that moved the benches to and from. And so in the meantime, Farmer's Market is working with the insurance company to get everything replaced, because it's their stuff. Park and Rec placed another bench there, they have matching benches that they use down in the main street area, so there is a bench there now in replacement of the one that was, that was broken. So if you happen to hear about that or see some of that, that's what was going on, but it's all getting taken care of. Friday, and maybe Steve, probably be part of his report, but we had the closing on the properties next door on Friday, and that went well. And Commissioner Bartley and I took a little tour through the buildings yesterday, through the two remaining structures that are there. The joint powers board will be meeting on Monday, the ninth, in the afternoon, actually, kind of a special meeting, and have some discussion on getting a recommendation as to what to do with those properties moving forward, so we can. It's at three o'clock on Monday afternoon, yes.
Are there tenants in those buildings?
No, no. Also, I got notice yesterday, Fall Convention out in Pier, hence is September tenth and eleventh, and they sent out a very, very rough draft. It's really, at this point, really not even worth sending out, because there's a lot of blank spaces yet for them to fill in yet. But it starts, the very first keynote starts at eleven o'clock on the tenth. I know Commissioner Miller, you as part of the exec board, will have to go out there. Some things, I think, four o'clock on that Sunday, the ninth. And I have something that morning, Monday morning, early, I think at like eight thirty or nine. So I'm, I guess, if anyone knows now that you plan to attend that, can let me know, but it's the, basically the tenth and the eleventh, and it sounds like the eleventh, they'll go until probably about four o'clock is what's tentatively on the agenda for now. So two, it starts at eleven o'clock on the tenth until about four o'clock on the eleventh. And I do have rooms out there for everybody too, so. If you know now that you're planning on going, I will, I know you. Yeah, I think I've got rooms for both nights, because I wasn't sure for both tenth.
I'm planning on going, but just overnight on Monday, not on Sunday.
Anybody else know?
I'll check my calendar.
Okay. Larry, do you know if you're?
Not sure yet.
Okay.
Got a wedding coming up that next week.
And we have, and we have a little bit of time, I mean, our SVP, but it showed up yesterday, so I thought I'd bring that up. Other than that, let's see, some dates. Offices, obviously, are closed tomorrow for Fourth of July holiday. We do have a reminder, we have our commission budget hearing at eight o'clock, not eight thirty, eight AM on Monday. It'll be next door in the community room. July eighteenth, First District Association's picnic, annual picnic out Memorial Park up in Cottington County, at six PM, it's on kind of like the west edge to me, the west side of Lake Compeska.
If I might add, that is great food, and it's, it's, it is, it's wonderful. You can just gorge yourself up there, can't you? And so if anybody, and it's good fellowship, if anybody's interested in going, I would highly encourage you to do so.
Then we have Safety Week events, July twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, and then the picnic kind of wraps up Safety Week that week, the twenty-sixth. That's gonna be, I believe, from eleven to one, it might be eleven thirty to one thirty, I'll keep you posted, but out at Pioneer Park. And last but not least, I am out of the office the rest of the week after today. And then next week, I go to Naco. So I'll be here for a few days next week, and then taken off again to go to the Naco National Convention.
Are you sending out anything we need to review for Monday's meeting? Or the documents that we've got, we've got everything we need to look at?
I have some things, I could send some things out ahead of time. I've got some documents I was planning on handing out that day, but if you want to see them ahead of time, I can sure send them out today. Would you like Vicky and I to update the budget to include an additional, I think it's closer to sixty thousand, Marty, for his cameras, just in the sheriff's department budget line? Okay. Vicky and I can work on that, we can send, I can get those, some of those things sent out.
Just make his department balance drop sixty off his salary.
Okay.
I think if we take away the cars, he won't have no place to put the cameras, so.
That's, that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Stacy? Steve, anything from the state attorney's office?
I just wanted to thank everyone who helped, Vicky, Jenna helped Stacy, Leann, Mike, and Stephanie for all the help on the closing. And that team approach, I think, made it go smoothly, so I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Great. And I don't know if everybody knows, that Michael Taylor did start at the state's attorney's office last week, right? Did I have that right? So he's on board, and there's no court this week. So he has a chance to get up and running on some paperwork, and then I think he'll be starting court next, next week, so.
Was this Steve's last meeting?
No.
No, you're staying with us a little bit longer, aren't you? And thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, for a lot. Then, on to commissioner reports, Commissioner Jensen.
The only thing I have, on Monday, the twenty-fifth, at a BCOAC meeting, and we've covered about everything that we did out there. We're just excited that Kristin's on board and moving forward, so.
I've been a bit of a gadabout, I have nothing.
Well, you're saying the same thing Commissioner Krugman's saying. Commissioner Bartley.
I didn't get married, though.
He probably hasn't announced, but we won't make it for him. On the twentieth, I attended the BDC's meeting over in Volga, got a nice tour of the community and its expansion and its plans, and where it wants to go. And Volga's obviously a growing community, and, you know, hopefully, maybe someday, we'll have to build a road that direction that's south, whatever. Twenty-first, I went to Jeff Wildon's retirement reception out at the SwifteL Center, it was very well-attended. On the twenty-seventh, we had our joint jurisdiction meeting, and I'll let our chairman fill you in on that. It went well, and there's a lot of work there, and we'll get to the end of it at some point in time, hopefully sooner rather than later. The twenty-eighth, I did stop up here and wished Jeff a farewell a second time in the building farewell reception, so that concludes my meeting.
Thank you. And for my report on June twenty-seventh, I was at the joint jurisdiction meeting that Commissioner Bartley referred to. We spent that whole meeting working on, really, the different types of density in different parts of the joint jurisdiction area for residential use. And we maybe have reached some resolution, we're waiting for First District to come back with maybe some proposed language on that. I think for their, a portion of the joint jurisdiction area, we might be talking about waiving the thirty-five acre rule, and maybe the southern part, but we're still talking, so there's nothing, nothing final on that yet. On June twenty-seventh, met with Terry, Bob, and Richard, and we worked on the ordinances. And in particular, we worked on the mobile home manufactured housing ordinance, and think we have that ready then to go back to planning and zoning. On June thirtieth, as Bob talked about, I went to the pipeline training in Alexandria, and we've already talked all about the pipeline training. But the other thing that was interesting about that, in two thousand eight, Hanson County determined that their courthouse was structurally unsound, and they pulled their courthouse down, and I had never been in their new courthouse. And they have a one-story courthouse that's not laid out significantly different, maybe, than Dakota Prairie. I mean, that's kind of the style of the building. It was very interesting seeing how they have that all set up. And I did, at that meeting, sit next to Jeremy Dangle, and Bob, correct me on this, he's assigned to Brookings County for what exactly?
He's the TransCanada International Emergency Management Director type person.
And I don't know how he'll ever have anything to do with us, since we don't have that pipeline running through here, but I did have a chance to visit with him, and that was interesting.
Northern border pipeline, which runs in Dual County, they, their main office is in Brookings. So he'll be a good asset to us if we ever have any kind of training going on or anything. I could use him as a, as a good resource. And if there ever is a quote-unquote, like a national, natural disaster or something, TransCanada, between Brookings, and they've also got a facility up in Arlington, South Dakota, they would be able to provide us support that it may take additional days for the state to get to us, they may be able to bring in immediately, so I think it's gonna be a good asset for us.
Yep, and he's a new person, and it sounds like he has a lot of experience from other places, other than here. So that would be my report. Anybody have anything else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? We're adjourned.